Try again, please.
Testing.
I muted myself.
Great. Good morning and welcome to San Juan County Council's Monday, July 27, 2020, meeting. If you're joining by phone or need to join by phone, the number is 360-700-599, and the access code is 441250. And that is nine o'clock. Meeting is now called to order. If we could all rise for the flag salute, please, Ingrid.
I pledge allegiance.
Here's a flag.
United States.
Nice days in America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm now going to read the Coast Salish acknowledgement. Let us acknowledge we reside in ancestral lands and waters of the Coast Salish people who have taken care of these lands since time immemorial. We have no excused absences. Council, today, I expect this to be a relatively short meeting. We have been meeting every week to continue to look at our COVID-related budget reductions in a hope to find ourselves in a balanced area over the next two years. So today, we've got some information from Myleene, and then to talk about next steps, it's my understanding, and we'll get this from Myleene, that we're at a balanced point for 2020, and we now need to determine or agree upon the amount of money that we're short for 2021 and move forward with discussions here. I hope to have most of the conversation on the information that Myleene has provided us, and then what we would like to see for next steps. In regards to the next meeting, we will be off next week, or at least we'll not meet next week. And depending on where we're at in the budget, if we still have budget issues to work on, then we would meet on the 10th, and we can decide that at the end of day today. And then the next regularly scheduled meeting will be the 11th. Is that all right for Council?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, good. And I don't necessarily anticipate this to be a very long meeting, but I wanted us to keep moving forward on budget ideas. So, Mr. Thomas, do you have anything beforehand? Uh, microphone off over to the auditor.
Not at this moment. I wondered how you're going to deal with public access.
Well, I don't see anyone on. We were going to read letters tomorrow, or at least the summary tomorrow. I will ask, is there anyone who's called in who'd like to write public comment at this point? We will take public comment or public access tomorrow, including summary readings of emails and any kind of participation. It would be a Skype or online. Again, is there anyone who'd like to write a public comment? All right. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Would you like, I'm sorry, you didn't finish your sentence. I don't, I'm not sure if I let you finish your sentence.
Oh, I don't have any comments at this time, but thank you.
Okay, great. So, Myleene, you have provided us with three documents, and I, is it possible to provide these to us in Excel format as well as PDF? I mean, not right this second, but at some point?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. So, Myleene, if you would, I would be very interested in starting with the two-page general fund document. I guess it's the total budget, the total budget page, and then go to the eight-page document, and then we can reference the 65-page document. Is that, is that okay? Or how are you planning on going through this?
I have no plan.
Okay. So, why don't we go through the, the, the total budget page first to kind of get a macro look at this, and then dive into some of the specifics that we finished up last week and moving forward? Is that okay?
Okay. Can you see my screen?
It's coming up slowly.
And, Myleene, would you like questions as you go through each, each document, or at the end?
Yes, that's fine. You can ask questions at any time.
Thank you. We still don't see your document.
Hmm, okay.
Oh, there it is. I just got it. Yep, yep.
I have the blank screen. There it goes.
Well, this is the document I sent you, which says something like budget summary, general and non-general funds.
And it's also two of two, is, or, sorry, a two-page document.
That is correct.
Okay, so, Myleene, the first thing, if you don't mind, there's, I'll, one, two, three, four, five. There's six columns. Could you just walk through each of the columns really quickly?
Sure. The first two columns are 2020 and 2021 budget as it currently exists. That is the 2020 budget as currently amended, and the 2021 budget with no other changes, just the changes that would flow through because of 2020 changes. So those are the budget as they exist.
And so the second, the third and fourth columns?
The third and fourth columns, I honestly, I probably should have left those off. I didn't think about that. But that's the kind of intermediary step that I described last week, the COVID first, but, the first COVID adjustments budget, which we're ignoring, in part because it has flexed over time. It has not been a fixed point in time. So when we do comparisons, we're comparing, comparing the fifth and sixth columns, which is the COVID budgets with department head input. So that is the proposed budget adjustment right now.
And, and so, Myleene, so that, the, what we approved last week is reflective in the last two columns?
That is correct.
And then the, and I, I don't mean to be redundant here, but the, the first two columns, or four columns, whatever, the first two sections for 20 and 21, that is what we just approved a couple weeks ago. Budget amendment, right? Or whenever it was.
In June, yes, June 9.
Okay, so, Council questions so far?
Nope.
Nope.
And are you all right if I go through this document, or we all go through it together?
Yep.
Yep.
So, um, so, Myleene, maybe we should just focus with the last two columns?
Sounds like a plan.
Um, and I know I always ask you this question, but I'd like to get my, wrap my head around this. So, uh, the beginning cash number was the ending cash number for 2019, the $3,139.
That's correct.
So it's something we talked about, the delta in what we budgeted of about $339,000 or something like that, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
Uh, the difference between what we budgeted for 2020 and what actual was, was about $339,000, and that's reflected in this $3,139,000.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the $2,755,000 is our ending cash number, which would be the beginning cash number for 2021, correct?
As proposed, yes.
Got it. All right. And so you're anticipating, the, the red number is our general fund revenue number, correct?
No.
Twenty-five.
That's the, no. There's a department in the, in the general fund, well, in the current expense fund, which is just called general. I usually refer to it as general revenue. It's the, the department within which sales tax and property tax is recorded. And that is the revenue number for that department.
Okay, but, okay, great. Um, and so the reflection that we've made on the sales tax, what was the reduction number that you utilized?
20% in current expense fund.
Okay.
You, you had suggested that I walk through these documents. Would you like me to do that?
That would be great. I was kind of waiting for you to do that. You weren't starting, so I was just kind of going along.
I was kind of waiting for you to stop talking. Okay, let's, uh, yeah, so you summarized the first three lines there. The first two lines are provided just for information, showing the beginning cash and the proposed ending cash. Then the third line is the, as I just mentioned, is the revenue number for that department. Revenue numbers for all the other departments in the general fund are shown there in the same column. You can see at the bottom that revenues and expenditures for the fund match. They do not have to, they are not supposed to. There's no expectation that revenue and expenditure funds for any single department will match, because all revenue that comes into the current expense fund is general fund revenue. So currently, we're balanced at about $20.5 million in the current expense fund. Below that is the grants fund, which also has departments. Now, those departments do have to match revenue and expenditures, because they are separate programs. You'll notice that there are two new departments in that fund because of, we've had so many sources of new grants this year. We created a couple of departments to reflect them. One of those is the third line down, CARES Act grant funding. And that department, you may notice, revenues and expenditures do not match. That's because $100,000 of that money is expected to reimburse expenses that have already incurred in the grants fund. So that is shown in grants fund general. Basically, it will be replenishing cash in the grants fund. The other new department, which I added since our last meeting, is the very last line in the grants fund called court grants. That is the $103,000 grant, which the courts received, most of which will be used to, for an AV system for the district court.
So, Myleene, that means that should have freed up some of the previous CARES funding since we had that covered there, correct?
That is correct. And back up in the current expense fund, the beginning cash number you can see is now, I don't have the exact number, but about $2 million better than it was last year. Sorry, not $2 million, I wish, about $200,000 better than it was last week. Um, and that's a variety of reasons, which I'll go over when we talk about the departments. And then below the grants fund are the rest of what are called general funds. And they're general funds because the funding comes primarily from the current expense fund. So most of the money that goes into these funds are general, is general unrestricted revenue, although we may have assigned specific uses to it. So, of course, they're all balanced, and there's been no changes since. Oh, there's one change since the DEM fund, emergency management, which is the last one of the general funds. Uh, there was a slight change because you, that was one of several departments where you said you did not want the managers to take pay cuts. So that went up a little since last week. But it's a small amount of money. So all of the general funds are balanced at about $31 million. Questions on that? Okay, if you look at, yes?
Are you going to go into budget stabilization fund?
Um, I wasn't going to. It hasn't changed since last week. What's your question?
Well, my question is, what was the 2019 ending, uh, ending cash balance for budget stabilization?
What was it, um, when?
Okay, so in the budget book, again, I don't have actuals, but in the budget book, we have the budget stabilization number for 2019 was $2,074,767. And we have for 2020, 2.4 million. And so one of our, one of the things that we talked about doing was removing the $300,000 to the budget.
It does seem high. Let me, let me go to that, um, oh, no, okay, I, I see what I'm looking at. Um, yes, we removed the transfer to, um, which would have just left it stable, and then also took money out. And reduced revenue. I can look at the detail on that fund if you like.
You don't, you don't need to right now. Just, that's just one of the things that was kind of glaring to me. That, I mean, it's only a couple hundred thousand off, but,
It's, it's the same numbers it was last week. And nothing has changed, didn't it?
So I think the latest number is, it represents the, we didn't transfer the 300K into it. And then the 2021 number represents the fact that we didn't put 300,000 into it, and we withdrew 400,000 in 2020.
That is correct, although, um...
In round numbers.
Yeah, round numbers. Um, we did both those things. They haven't changed.
Right, exactly.
That's why I was just interested in how the fund balance ended, what the number was, because I only have projected.
Okay, well, let's just look at it, because... Because it's always possible there's a mistake, and it's good to make sure that there isn't while you're looking at it. Sorry, I should have opened this before he started.
Myleene, I would never assume that you would ever make a mistake.
Oh, it's been known to happen. Heck, I checked his job. I ran again. Um, okay, let's look at budget stabilization. What you see is abbreviated, the BS fund. So, um, so here we go, adopted. We started at 2 million, and we were going to be at 2.7 by the end of 2021. Still stopped at 2 million, no transfer. And, uh, that reduces...
That's the difference.
I beg your pardon?
Well, in line 10 there, you have investment interest. That's the, the $22,000 is what makes it 2.1. That's...
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, so that answered your question then?
It does, thank you.
You're welcome. Okey-dokey. Um, so, back here, there are no more questions. The second page is the, all of the other funds. This is less interesting, if you will, because all of these balance each other. Um, I mean, revenues and expenditures balance, and even if actual expenditures go down, then the difference would go to ending cash. So it would still balance. So, um, I, any changes which occurred in these funds would have been minor corrections. At the present time, I can't remember any changes that happened between last week and this week. Oh, I did go through the lodging tax fund and, um, straightened that out and make some assumptions based on your last meeting about which projects would be carried forward. It did not change the amount of money available. So, um, how about we look at the department?
Myleene, can I ask you one question really quick?
Yes, of course.
Uh, ER and R and the revenue, why, why is there such a difference from 20 to 21?
There's assumed to be a $7 million loan coming in to build the building.
Wow, got it. Thank you.
Good question. Um, okay. Then the next, next document is, uh, provided to you last week, and there have been some changes in here, most of them fairly minor. Um, first of all, I wanted to point out that the assessor pointed out an error in something I had done is basically just the calculation of the percent reduction. Oh, that should be a minus. It says plus, but that's just basically a typo. Um, I said that he had a 1.7%, approximately 1.7% reduction. It was actually 3.35. And in 2021, we made a change to the wages of one of the appraisers, the one who was leaving and being replaced by an apprentice, because it would still be an apprentice next year. We reduced the wages there and got him to about 3.35% in both years. So, um, that is better than what it was. Um, the, trying to think of any other specific changes that were made. You know, mostly it was minor adjustments that you, oh, facilities.
Went from 19,000 to 50,000.
And that is an increase. Uh, yes, that is because, okay. Speaking more generally, you indicated last week that you did not want to accept any proposals for management wage reductions or FTE reductions. So that affected, let's see, community development, health and community services. I'm trying to remember if there was a, uh, yeah. And when I was looking at those and removing those proposed changes, I also looked at facilities. The proposal in facilities was to shift 25% of his general fund time, well, half of his general fund time, which is 25% of his total time, to capital projects. And he certainly spends a lot of time on capital projects. It is a completely reasonable thing, which we just haven't done in the past, but will be doing in the future. However, what I noticed when I was reviewing this was that, that change was made by having his, um, having his, um, current expense time. So it was about 50,000, it became 25,000. The problem with that is we're halfway through the year. So it should really only have been a quarter reduction. If for half of the year, you take away half of it, that's a quarter. So that was a $25,000 difference. Now, remember, his was an increase in, in 2020 anyway, because he had three early retirements. Um, so yes, that went up by $25,000. Good catch. Um, and the other change you discussed, but the judges responded to that, was requesting that the judges not take time off. Their response was that they can manage one day a month, that they want to stand with their people, and that they requested that you accept the, their budget as submitted. The district court judge did reduce her furlough days from, I think she had 12 in her last version, to seven, so it's just one per month. So there's a slight change in district court as well. Um, but assuming that you're good with what the judge has requested, that is how it is included in this budget.
Myleene, what's in general administration?
That's the... That's the county manager? Oh, you mean, what, what's the reduction? Why is it big?
Yeah.
Um, there's a couple of professional services reductions, but that's primarily because they lost a position. Um, it was advertised. It was only supposed to be filled for three quarters of the year, I think, anyway, and didn't get any good candidates, and then the world fell apart. And so, uh, the plan is to forego that position for this year, but to refill it, um, slightly, in a slightly different structure, um, next year. So it'll be lower cost.
Okay, but that's not 600,000. I think he's looking at fund, general mission, not, um, my fund, but 58.
Oh, general administration, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you meant county administration. General administration, right here, that is, um, the, the $300,000 transfer to the budget stabilization fund. Um, a $200,000, something else that was taken out. Oh, oh, the furlough.
The furlough, I was reading there.
The furlough days are come, are currently in that department, just to estimate them. And then the, the other, the last 100,000 was 50,000 reduction in expected costs of the annual audit, and $50,000 reduction in the transfer to the capital reserve.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Myleene, on that same note, on the document before, um, when you're transferring money into that same fund, 52 general administration, so like the, the $411,000 in the budget stabilization, that would record as revenue in 2020 against that fund, correct?
In that department, yes, I believe that's where we have it.
Because it says, uh, the 2020 number is 1,258,350, and then the 2021 number is 133,794, which I'm...
Okay.
I don't quite understand.
Sure, you're talking about, you're talking about revenue now, is that correct?
No, I just, what we're talking about is, I looked at the, the last document we went over, and I apologize. There's just such an anomaly in 20 and 21 revenue, and I didn't understand.
Okay. My question was, you're talking about revenue, right?
Yes.
So if, I'm going to leave the expenditures page, then go to revenue. Is that okay? Any questions about expenditures? Oh, okay, revenue. Now, you're talking about general administration, is that right? Um, yes, that's a very big difference, isn't it? That's because, um, the CARES transfer in is going in there, the transfer from the budget stabilization fund is going in there, and the FEMA money is going in there. So yes, that's where all the grant money is being reported in 2020. The 2021 number is more normal.
But I, I guess I'm, or I'm confused if that's the case. We, I thought we agreed a month or so ago to put $200,000 of the budget stabilization fund into 2021.
Um, that was the discussion, but we hadn't really put together a whole budget yet. So, um, and I believe that some of the, some of the council was not comfortable with digging that deeply into budget stabilization. At least, that's the way I read it.
Okay, so just for confirmation, the 2021 number for 52 general administration does not include any, any revenue from budget stabilization?
That is correct.
But it does reflect not adding money to the budget stabilization fund?
No, it does not. We took that out. No, wait, I haven't done that for 2021.
I thought you did.
I can't remember. Honestly, we're not done with 2021. Um, we need to get done with 2020 first. Um, so the amendment that we will make, um, will be to 2020. And later in the year, we will do another amendment, possibly again to 20, or probably again to 2020, and definitely to 2021. See, every change in 2020 affects 2021, which is why I'm interested in putting a stake in the ground and adopting 2020, so we can move forward with confidence on 2021.
Yeah, and I guess, and I, and I agree, and I, I think we're pretty close to being there. Um, I was, I'm looking ahead.
Yes, I do too.
I've been looking ahead to 2021, and I'm struggling with the difference of the number that you said we're off on ending cash. So that's, maybe I've already jumped ahead. So, sorry, keep going.
Um, okay. So if you look at the, um, general number, and it's hard to really see this, because there's so much going on in that number. One of the, um, changes which was noted is that the ending cash is now about $200,000 better than last week. Um, 100, that's, there's two reasons for that. Both have to do with the CARES grant. Um, the CARES grant from AOC, which brings in $100,000, is replacing $100,000 of the CARES, um, expenditures, because we had allocated funds for that remodel. So, remember, we had, I don't know, a very large number, 400,000 or so, of incurred expenses in the general fund, in current expense fund, that we're not going to be able to be reimbursed with CARES funds, because there just wasn't enough. So that extra $100,000 is... So that extra hundred thousand dollars is causing us to be able to shift more funds back into the general fund. Um, and the other, the other part is, um, I think it was just a typo, um, basically, I was off by a digit, it's just one digit. But it's one digit, the third place, it was a hundred thousand dollar, um, difference. Fortunately, in our favor, in the sense that that also increased the transfer to the general fund. So, yes, we're two hundred thousand dollars better in twenty twenty, which makes us about two hundred thousand dollars better in twenty twenty-one as well. Uh, at eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, I believe it is, that's still not a good enough ending cash by a long shot in twenty twenty-one, but it is better, it is better, so we have a better beginning point to do some more work. And, uh, you know, we will continue to observe what the economy does and build our expectations for twenty twenty-one based on that.
So, the two hundred thousand dollars that we just found?
Yes, well
Adjusted, whatever, is that reflected in this negative eight-ten?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, that, that's really, that is
Where is the eight-ten? I'm, I can't see an eight-ten on the page that I'm looking at.
That is in the other document, oh.
Look at the, it's the budget summary, um, document.
There. Can you see my hands, my cursor, when I'm? I can't tell what you can see. Okay, so, yeah, here is the eight hundred and ten thousand, that's ending cash in twenty twenty-one. And here's ending cash in twenty twenty, so they are better than they were.
And what do we need to get to?
Here?
Yeah.
Two point five or so?
But we're at two point seven.
That's twenty twenty, she's talking, twenty twenty-one needs to be two point five.
The ending cash balance.
See, every change in twenty twenty affects twenty twenty-one. So, um,
You and I have talked about this, I think, Mike as well, um, we have a statutory requirement that our ending cash has to be correct.
It has to be ten percent, I know, I'm not, I'm looking at beginning cash of two point seven million.
That's correct, that's a good beginning cash.
And then we take the eight-ten out, and we end up at one something.
So it's the eight-ten that's the problem.
It's the eight-ten that's the problem. Oh, it's not the beginning cash for twenty twenty-one that's a problem, Jamie, I see what you're saying. It is the eight-ten ending cash in twenty twenty-one, which would begin, the beginning cash in twenty twenty-two, that's the problem.
You're breaking up, so I can't, I don't know what you said.
It's kind of, you realize, oh, I'm sorry, let me try this again. If that continues to be a problem, I may need to switch batteries. What I said is that the two point seven is beginning cash in twenty twenty-one, which is good. The eight-ten is ending cash in twenty twenty-one, or beginning cash in twenty twenty-two, and that is not good.
Okay.
Our, our revenue, remember, in twenty twenty-one is much worse, because we're losing all the, um, grant revenue that we are enjoying in twenty twenty, although we continue to expect decreased other revenues.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, at this point, I believe that twenty twenty is in a good, as good a place as we're gonna get for now. I believe that we should move forward to adopt these changes, to put it into law, to tell departments, yes, we're serious about those changes you proposed, um, and then continue to think about twenty twenty, we may identify some more decreases, but especially continue to work on twenty twenty-one, so we can do our real mid-biennium rev, um, review and budget amendment in the usual budget timeframe.
All right, um, but, Myleene, what, what is the, the statutory requirement, is it ten percent for ending cash?
Yes, it is.
Um, I, I would also like, uh, at this point, that we all agreed on what we would, are we aiming for an ending cash balance, that's what we're required, or do we want to have a little bit more cushion? So what is the, what is the ten percent requirement, Myleene, for twenty-one?
Um, for twenty-one, about two point five million? No, no, about, uh, two point
Oh, five.
Oh, five million, yes.
Right, so
The two point five is about twelve percent.
Twelve percent, so, you mean, at some point, maybe it's not today, but council, I'd love to have a discussion, would we like to set a goal every year of a twelve percent ending cash balance? Which gives us a little bit of cushion over our, uh, requirement.
Well, I certainly think shooting for two point five for twenty twenty-one ending cash is a reasonable target, as we discuss the various cuts necessary to try to get there, and good enough target anyways.
Okay, so Myleene posed a question, um, are we comfortable at this point with, uh, the changes that we have made to date regarding twenty twenty? Is that a decision we're ready to make today? At least in principle?
Uh, well, I'm, uh, you know, Myleene proposed a lot of changes late in the day, when she was going through things that we never discussed, so I don't know how many of those are included.
What changes are you talking about?
Well, you talked about cutting I O S A, which is part of the levy, and
Oh, no, right. Though, I'm sorry, that was all just, uh, proposals for twenty twenty-one, and no, none of those changes have been made.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
So I think the, the question is, are we reasonably comfortable with what we've done to date to direct or ask Myleene to move forward with a budget amendment for twenty twenty? There's still gonna be, since this requires a public hearing, there's still gonna be other opportunities to look at the numbers.
Counsel?
I say move forward with what we have, yep, for twenty twenty.
I, I agree, and I think, um, as we're experiencing, and that's phone call that I had with a couple of weeks ago with Congressman Larson, it looks like Congress is gonna do something, and it's just like the courts, we didn't, had no idea that we were gonna get that money, so I think we're uncomfortable with moving forward for twenty twenty and seeing how things start unwinding, or unraveling.
No more unraveling, please.
And I, I support
Poor choice of words.
And I support moving forward with this as well. Um, do we want to set a goal for when we're comfortable with twenty twenty-one?
I don't think we'll be comfortable with twenty twenty-one in
My target is October.
Well, a, again, I think we ought to get to a comfortable spot, knowing what we know today, and then watch things between now and October, so I would not kick this can to October, I would try to get twenty twenty-one to the best shape that we think we can do it as of today, and then maybe we make tweaks either positive or negative in October.
Absolutely, Bill, and when I said my target is October, I meant my target for adoption is October. I would like to continue to work on this, um, and to have some concrete proposals that we can adopt in October. One of my questions today is for the clerk, Ingrid, what is the earliest date that we could schedule a public hearing for adoption of the budget amendment, allowing for two weeks of advertising?
If we put in the advertisement on the twenty-ninth, the closest, uh, day, uh, well, the closest Tuesday would be the eighteenth.
Okay, um, I can do that, uh, council, are you comfortable with that?
For twenty twenty, yep.
For twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, this, go ahead.
Jamie, are you all right with that?
Yeah.
Um, so let's put this on the agenda, uh, we should probably post it for, uh, an action item on the agenda to look at. Uh, add it to tomorrow, to set a public hearing? Is that what you're requesting, Myleene, is a public hearing?
Yes.
Can't we do that today?
Yeah, do it now.
I have a question for you, though, are you meeting on the eleventh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, you can have, uh, a discussion on the eleventh, just to make sure you've, I mean, we've touched it several times already, but, um, not clearly with the idea of adoption yet, you can touch, uh, talk about it on the eleventh, um, and saying you're going to adopt on the eighteenth, and then have a public hearing on the eighteenth, and that would all be, um, um, give adequate notice of the change in my mind. So, well, yeah, I can, um, I can have the notice ready for the twenty-ninth. Wait, Ingrid, you said if we know this on the twenty-ninth, you mean in the paper on the twenty-ninth? Because we can't do that.
Send it to the paper on the twenty-ninth.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I said the twenty-ninth, because I'll be on, I'll be on vacation on Thursday and Friday.
That's fine, I can do that.
That would be great.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we set a public hearing for the, uh, second budget amendment for the twenty twenty budget for, uh, August eighteenth, uh, at nine fifteen AM.
Okay. We have a motion to second for, um, setting a public hearing on the eighteenth of August at nine fifteen AM in Friday Harbor, Washington, uh, regarding a second budget amendment, uh, are there any other questions or comments? Without seeing any elements in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries three zero, thank you very much.
So originally, we weren't meeting on the eighteenth, but now we are.
Oops.
Hold on.
Uh, you're right.
That was a fair week, so I'm just
Um, I had us meeting every Tuesday in August.
Well, we never talked, we never discussed it, so
Okay.
Is that a problem?
Well, um
Yeah, I'm gonna be out at the fairgrounds crying.
By yourself.
Should, Mr. Stevens, would you like us to move it to the twenty eighth, twenty-fifth?
Well, no, it's just, I just like to know these things, and that we did it as a council.
Right.
So, that's the deal, you saying that I had you a schedule, then that's not discussing it, and not adjusting people's calendars, it tends to be a problem.
Right.
Okay, I, Mr. Stevens, and I apologize if it was, I thought we communicated, because it's on our calendar sheet, and, and we, I thought we had agreed to that, so, uh, my apologies, I'm looking at a calendar sheet that has all of Thurs, uh, Tuesdays in August set up. So, uh, my mistake, I must have done it with the clerk and not spoke to council, but we all have these copy sheets, so my apologies, how would we like to move forward?
And I don't have those sheets, so, there.
What?
Well, just don't assume things that aren't in the pack.
I'm available on the eighteenth, and I can meet.
And I can meet on the eighteenth, and the eleventh.
And how about the twenty-fifth?
I have that scheduled.
Great.
Just let me confirm that you have it scheduled as a council meeting?
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, do we care to talk about any more regarding budget issues today?
Um, should we start talking about ways to maybe start to address twenty twenty-one?
Myleene, are you still, uh, have any other information regarding twenty twenty-one that you'd like to provide us today?
I don't really, my plan, um, is to convene the budget committee, as I do every year, and to use that forum to talk about ideas and solicit more information from departments.
So, yeah, I
Go ahead, Bill.
Um, I was gonna say, so, I think, you know, we still need to talk about what are we not, what are we gonna stop doing, what are we gonna not do in twenty twenty-one that we've been doing? So, this whole, you know, reduction of service, um, as compared to all the squeezing we've done for twenty twenty. Remember, the squeezing in twenty twenty is not sustainable, right? We're gonna have to release that squeezing, which means twenty twenty-one needs some physical, uh, structural changes in the county to be able to sustain itself moving forward. So, we're not gonna be able to squeeze twenty twenty-one any better than we, since we've already squeezed twenty twenty. Um, so, the question is, what structural changes are we gonna make?
I agree in that question, what structural changes can we make, and what services can we eliminate will be the focus of the budget committee as we look at twenty twenty-one.
Well, and I want to, I want to hear it from the council as well, as to whether they have any ideas.
I don't have any this morning, Bill.
Okay.
I think, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Uh, what's gonna be impactful, but not, uh, factored in, will affect, uh, a little bit of twenty, but twenty-one, is our continued discussion um, regarding, uh, COLA, regarding, uh, final tally on furloughs, um, which we have yet to get commitment from eighteen forty-nine on, um, and then, uh, wage scale implementation, those are gonna be impactful, certainly on the twenty-one budget. And we're working towards, uh, getting information and counsel on that, but that's still hanging out there, that's why I mentioned it.
So Decision on the budget stabilization fund, if we care to utilize that as well.
Right, but, so, we've also talked about a work-from-home program, and thus reducing our office space requirements?
Um, yeah, there's an outstanding exercise for departments to, um, to figure that out, but I think, um, identifying work-at-home positions, or certainly eligible ones, we can certainly get rid of a building, and that should be a goal for twenty twenty-one.
Exactly, so, that would be something that we need to start this year.
Yep.
Hopefully, having some impact in twenty twenty-one.
Throw down the mandate, and start working on it.
So, Mike, would we need, um, also to be doing a policy, um, I mean, we kind of had the emergency policy adjustment, but a more permanent policy adjustment?
I'd say so.
For, for the work at home, yeah?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, yeah, and so, I think the safety committee was working on an assignment for people to, people, departments, uh, to figure that out, and, um, I certainly think the result of that can be some consolidation of buildings, which will, of course, save us money.
Um, one of the other topics was looking at the current expense costs of grant-funded programs?
Yes.
Um
And I think, Bill, you, you've spoken several times about, uh, is there any privatization of things like, you know, building permits, or, or other things that we do, that we would want to look at as well?
Yep, outsourcing building permits, um, I, I also would suggest we look at, uh, reducing the, the limit on accrued vacation, since that's an unfunded liability that we move forward, and people are using it as a savings account, and every time they get their COLA, their STEP, that, that accrued vacation hours, you know, increase in value, and our, our liability gets increased. So, um, there's customer service, you know, counter-hours that we can look at. Um, I mean, there's all kinds of things. Uh, one question for you, Myleene, what was your assumption about the fair in twenty twenty-one? Did you put in virtual fair?
We have made no real changes in twenty twenty-one, as I said earlier. It's, uh, other than changes that flow through from twenty twenty, such as, uh, some of the early retirements that weren't replaced, beginning cash, that kind of thing, um, retirements that weren't replaced, beginning cash, that kind of thing. Twenty twenty-one right now is just what, is the same as it was in adopted.
So it assumes a full fair in twenty twenty-one?
Yes, it does.
All right, so can we can we make that call?
So
Could we wait and look at that in the context of all the other proposals that will be discussed?
I guess my my two cents would, let's let's have the virtual fair experience and see how we might pivot into a new fair model from that, but I think it'd be important just to have the experience and try to learn from that before we
Okay.
Figure it out. And then also the parks budget, figuring out park staffing, and I'm working on that with staff, so that's that's another piece that I'm hanging out there.
So do either of you, Myleene, Mike, remember what's the delta between a physical fair and a virtual fair, expense-wise? In a gross number.
I want to say that the budget for the on the virtual side, that you looked at was around sixty-five thousand dollars.
I don't think it's a lot cheaper.
Okay.
No, I mean
But we haven't really been through it to know, to know. I I really need to let it happen, as Mike said, and see what it looks like.
Okay.
I think it might be, because at least the proposed budget for the virtual fair was covered by grants, not current expense, whereas the regular fair, you know, I mean, it depends on vendors and everything else, but we end up running in the hole on it.
Yep.
Yeah, to me, there was a huge difference of spending
It was a huge difference.
Couple hundred thousand dollars for the fair versus sixty-five. But anyway, we'll see what happens.
Right. My other question was, what's our target for motor, motor, yeah, vehicle pool reductions?
Again, you know, we we now have a motor pool, people are using it, and it'll be, we'll see what happens over the next six, eight months, and then see, so it's a little bit of a learning curve for everyone.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, the old adage, if we don't start reducing the number of vehicles, then they're not gonna learn how to share better. So I think we, I think we need to at least, you know, do some forced reduction in number of vehicles, which will therefore increase people's need to and ability to plan ahead and and share better.
Agreed.
So is it possible, counsel, on the eleventh, to come back with a little bit more, if you have more detailed thoughts on these subjects that were just mentioned?
Mr. Chair, I think all of these are mentioned, are stuff that are, there's effort going into, they're just, we just don't have answers at this at this time, but it's kind of keeping track of this list that we just went through that hopefully will have a positive impact on the twenty-one budget.
All right, so when do you think we'll have that in that feedback there, Mike?
Working on it, Bill.
No, I understand, I'm just giving, asking a ballpark, is, well, it's not next week, because we're not meeting next week, so we have at least two weeks before we talk about this again. Or should we kick it to the third week, which would be the eighteenth?
What I'd like to do, Bill, is as we get, as we develop the information, just keep bringing it to council.
Okay. Versus lumping it all at once.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so is there any else regarding budget? So I would like to ask council formally, so do we, we do not need to meet on August tenth, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And our next meeting will be August eleventh, followed by August eighteenth, followed by August twenty-fifth. Are we all okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
And our next meeting is tomorrow at nine o'clock. Is there anything else for today?
Mr. Chair?
Myleene?
I believe that you still need to set the budget hearing, I mean, the public hearing for the eighteens.
If I could put it on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, moved by Mr. Watson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, missed that, thank you.
I took care of you, Myleene.
Is there anything else for today?
Uh, no, I don't.
I don't have anything.
All right, meeting adjourned at nine fifty-five, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.